Check one, two, one, two, three. Check, check.
Check one, two, one, two for CFRA. Check one, two, one, two. Check, check.
Check for Rogers. Check, check. Check, one, two, three. Are we coming on both channels? Yes.
... Check, 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 check. One, two, one, two, one, two. Un deux trois. Check, check. Vérification. Un deux, un deux, un deux. Check, 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 check. It's good in the room, but this is going to be the podium one now. No problem. Check, check, check. Yeah, we're good on that.
Hi.
That's just Marianna, Melina.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, yes, so we'll do something.
Throw it over to them and wait. Is this a good distance from? I don't know how.
Maybe move in a bit.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, get all the coughs. Yeah, I know. I have my water too, but I think, yeah, go quickly grab that. I thought it was gonna be on mute and then as soon as he starts singing they're gonna unmute it. So it's gonna be fine. Yeah. Hi, good, good. Nice to meet you. I'm Melina. I'm Marianna.
Start just on time.
He's very nice. Oh, there we go. That's awesome. Okay, one, two, three.
Good for being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start the meeting of city council in just a moment. If you members of council could take their seats.
We'll start in one minute.
And there are some technical difficulties with Rogers cable, so it's going to be audio cast, but not broadcast for the foreseeable future. So apologize for that, but there's a problem with the Rogers connection, but it is going to be audio cast on Ottawa.ca. So we'll start in just a moment. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning. Welcome to city council meeting of April 23, 2014.
Could you please stand for prayer or remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. Colleagues, I'd like you to join me for a moment of silence in honor of former Goulburn councillor Ken Vaughan, who passed away earlier this month. Mr Vaughan represented Richmond on Goulburn council from 1982 to 1991, and he was a longtime employee of General Dynamics. He was also a stalwart of the community, who was a director of the Richmond Agricultural Society and a very active member of the Richmond Lions Club, among many other pursuits and interests. Mr Vaughan was 76 years of age. Let us recognize Ken Vaughan's lifetime of achievement in service to his family, friends, and neighbors with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. It's now my pleasure to ask councillor Deans to introduce two special guests, who are going to sing the national anthem for us, and we welcome them.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce you to two young, talented singers from Gloucester Southgate Ward, Melina and Marianna. Coconos are sisters who share a passion for music and who have been able to share their talent through a wide variety of performances and concerts around the city. Melina is 16 years old and currently in grade 11 at Canterbury High School and is enrolled in their vocal arts program. She sings in both the vocal choir and the performing chamber choir. Melina also sang with the Ottawa Children's Choir for four years and is currently is a junior choir director at her church. Marianna is 13 and is in grade 8 at Featherstone Drive Public School. She has sung with the Ottawa Children's Choir for the past five years and now sings with their chamber choir. Marianna is currently one of the directors of her school's musical Frozen, which will be performed this spring. I have to say I'm a little disappointed that the Rogers feed isn't working this morning because their grandmother, Alice Sofinopoulos, was going to be watching. But in any event, we're very lucky to be able to experience their talent here today through the singing of our national anthem. So please join me in welcoming Melina and Marianna Coconos as today's voices of council.
Well, thank you very, very much for that beautiful rendition, and thank you councillor Deans for choosing those individuals from your wards for performing this afternoon or this morning. We apologize that, I think your mom might have got a video of that that can show your grandmother, so we apologize for the technical malfunction. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs Shelby Hayder to the podium for this week's City Builder Awards. I'd like to come forward, and I'd ask Mrs Hayder's councillor Jan Harder to also join us. And welcome. Thank you for coming.
I would also like to invite councillor Jan Harder to join us.
Almost a decade ago, Mrs Hayder was trained to run the Boston Marathon when she received a diagnosis that would change her life. She had Parkinson's disease. She decided to race and make it as positive She decided to race and make it as positive an experience as possible, raising funds for Parkinson's research in the lead up to the race. Rather than making this a one-time event, Mrs Hayder instead parlayed the success of her run into a program she named Pass the Baton. This program serves as an awareness opportunity for students to learn about Parkinson's while raising funds to research and having fun while they're at it.
This program serves as an awareness opportunity for students to learn about Parkinson's while raising funds for research and having fun while they're at it.
Each school visit is an assembly where she tells her story and teaches the kids a little bit about the disease. The students then come to gym class, class by class, for a 15-minute exercise on strength, balance, flexibility, and speed, all important areas for somebody with Parkinson's. Mrs Hayder has visited 65 schools and over 34,000 students and hundreds more staff over the past seven years. And while educating and inspiring students, Mrs Hayder's visits have raised $80,000 for Parkinson's research. Both who know her well attest that the most impressive thing about Mrs Hayder is that she faces Parkinson's and her work to promote research towards a cure with endless positivity and enthusiasm. She is not only a great role model for the kids that she meets at schools, but also to newly diagnosed Parkinson's patients who may be struggling with their own diagnosis. She always has time to talk to them, to help them through what can be obviously a very difficult situation. She stands as a great example of how to face the disease and to use the fight for others.
She stands a great example of how to face this disease.
Finding a cure for Parkinson's and for showing both our city's kids and us adults how far a positive attitude and dedication can take someone. Congratulations on receiving this award, and thank you for the great work.
Well, I'll tell you in a minute about it. So everybody has a story to tell, and mine is special as you may have just caught on to the fact that instead of, when I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, within 24 hours, I, instead of dwelling on all the negative aspects of how my life would proceed, I decided to try and think of the most positive thing I could do and what I could do to help make the situation better. And so over the last eight years, I would put myself to a bit of work. And the reason why I'm wearing this very special jacket is because yesterday I was doing a presentation in the schools, as I have done in the last eight years. And the principal came to the front of the gymnasium. There were maybe 500, 600 students ready to hear my next chapter, my story, and how I feel with Parkinson's and what's happening in the research. And they surprised me by saying, it's your turn to take a rest. We want you to have a comfortable seat in our auditorium, and we're going to have the children present back to you what they've learned about Parkinson's over the last years. And I was completely surprised, and I overwhelmed, and it was lovely and heartwarming, and they did a fantastic job and humbling. And then the next part of it was that there's always a science portion of my presentation, and I always am proud to have a researcher from the University of Ottawa with me to describe what's happening in the research with the money that they donated the year previous. And out came, from the back of the gymnasium, 12 of the researchers from the Parkinson Research Consortium at the University of Ottawa with the white jackets on. And they did the science presentation. And I had a tissue to my eyes. And they presented me at the end of it with my own lab jacket. And so that's why I've got this on, and they've signed it. And nobody has a monogrammed one. And it's got my name in the University of Ottawa. So I'm very proud to wear this. And my husband said, are you sure you want to wear that? Counsel me, and I said, I am. I'm very proud of this. And so I guess this, I was very, I'm truly proud today to stand here. And thank you very much for the honor. And thank you for my family having the opportunity to be here as well.
Thank you very much, Shelby. And Shelby's husband is here, and her son, and her son's girlfriend from Nipissing University. So welcome to City Council, and thank you for that nice story. And as I said earlier, it ties in nicely not only the honor you were given yesterday, but the fact that the Boston Marathon took place just a couple days ago, and that's what got you started on this journey. So thank you very much. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Consiglière Minette.
Please.
Councillor Blowus.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshantiiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egway.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consiglière Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Clark. Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hobbs. Councillor McCray.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Councillor Hume.
Here.
Consiglière Blay.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Consiglière Duroche.
Here.
Councillor Hughley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Le Cadre Meditant, Monsieur Maire.
Merci. 14, carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêt. None. Communications and responses as printed. Regrets, absence. Councillor Clark is advised will be absent from the meeting of the 23rd of April, 2014. Notice to introduce reports. Motion pour ta présentation de rapport. Councillors Moffat and Thompson, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 17th of April, 2014, Agricultural Rural Affairs Committee Report 40A, Community Protective Services Committee Report 30, Planning Committee Report 68, and Transit Commission Report 25 be received and considered.
Carried. City Clerk and Solicitor. Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for Period Ending the 17th of April, 2014. Received. Committee Reports. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 40A. A report and zoning amendment on residential conversions. And we do have a replacement motion that came about as a result of the meeting of planning and ARAC that councillor Hume and Harder are moving. If councillor Hume could introduce that, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor and members of council, at the planning committee meeting of March 25th, committee tasked staff to further consult on the conversion bylaw based on some of the common messages we heard from public delegations. I want to add that we did hear from, we did hear from several community associations in support of the bylaw. However, we heard about some very specific issues with the amenity space requirements in the bylaw for those wards outside the inner urban area, as well as with respect to some of the transition provisions. So staff have further consulted with these public delegations and with the councillors surrounding the inner core and have, and are recommending to us today a modification to the bylaw. Staff have reviewed the transition provisions and are recommending that applications received on or before March 20th would be exempt from, it would exempt their developments from this bylaw provided that they complete their application for a building permit by April 23rd. This will give applicants time, the time they require to complete their application. Now, this transition applies citywide with the exception of the areas under the interim control bylaw, such as Sandy Hill, the Glebe, and Old Ottawa South, where no transition provisions would apply, as of course we all realize that that would defeat the purpose of the interim control placed in those areas. The motion in front of council today replaces the motions made of planning committee on March 25th. Given, staff has addressed the significant issues the committee tasked them with and that were presented from the public at, at the meeting of March 25th. So councillor Harder and I are moving this motion, and we ask that council support the changes and the recommendations that we believe, and the planning committee believes, improve the build form in this city and to ensure that future development is in character with the community and with the neighborhood they are zoned for. And just to be quite specific, Mr Mayor, we did receive, or members of council did receive a memorandum from Mr Moser on April 16th, which outlined some of the changes, where they said, they proposed amending the amenity area requirement. Other issues were tandem, parking, and planned unit developments. And those are, planned unit developments, of course, are large lots with several buildings on them. And tandem parking, of course, is where only two parking spaces are required and can be accommodated by having two vehicles, Park One behind the, in a driveway. So, Mr Mayor, that is the motion that is before you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a number of people that want to speak to this, so we'll carry on and then finish the bulk consent as well, and then come back to this item.
Okay.
So, Planning Committee Report Number 68, upon de même, soit solide, with Planning and Growth Management Term of Council Work Plan 2014. Received. Bulk Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Councillor Shirelli, you're on the first item. Anyone on the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. Okay, so we're back to the first item. So the deputy clerk informs me that councillor Hume and Harder's motion is a replacement motion. I believe that advice is from Mr Mark. And we have councillor Shirelli on questions and comments, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Worship. A number of groups presented to committee when we discussed this item, and they represent, I believe, several, well, thousands of potential conversion units. And they raised three or four specific concerns. I was wondering if you could tell me how those groups are responding to the suggested replacement motion.
Mr Mayor, through you. We've had a meeting with the public delegations that were at the planning committee, and staff were able to resolve the issues that were discussed. Mainly, the low-rise apartment buildings with the amenity space was, was a big part of those discussions, as well as the transition clause. So what council has before you today is a direct reflection of the feedback that we receive from those public delegations. So staff has made changes to ensure that we are now modifying that bylaw to ensure that it's a little more appropriate.
All right, are there any, were there, were there any indications given by any of the groups that they would intend to pursue this further after this meeting?
Mr Mayor, what we committed to doing with the amenity space with those low-rise apartments, we're going to have further discussion on that, further consultation on that as part of the Infill 2 study. And those results will be coming forward at the end of this year. So we're still endeavoring to continue that conversation around that. It just won't be part of this bylaw going forward today.
So they've agreed to transfer their efforts to Infill 2? Is that correct?
Mr Mayor, that is, that's my takeaway from that conversation, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Blowus, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just have a quick question here, and I guess I would say that with respect to the Moser memo, obviously considerable work has gone on in the time that's elapsed between planning committee and now, judging by the limited or almost no reaction that we've had from delegations. So there's obviously been enough working on this and compromise to achieve an acceptable product. Just the question on page four, where we talk about transition provisions and applications received before March 20th. One of the bullets, the last bullet refers to, refers to that properties would be specifically exempted from the provisions of the bylaw on the grounds that they were recently rezoned. But that's by right anyways. I'm not sure why that's included in here, because we, this would not overrule any or override any zoning that people have or property owners have achieved. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks councillor Blowus. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Thank you. A couple of questions I think are worth posing at this point, just to be absolutely clear and get on the record. So moving forward now, we will be in a situation where anyone from someone who lives in a home, owns a home, and wants to make changes to it, or someone who is converting a house below that level at which it would trigger a series of new requirements, they will be free to start doing that and submit their applications as of when?
That's correct. So the introduction of secondary dwelling units is not affected by this, and the ability to do something that is permitted in zoning continues. So basically, this means that the interim control bylaw ends, and the freeze ends. And these new rules now take on.
Okay. And I also want to make something really clear here. I suppose this is one of those questions where you know the answer to it, but have to say it anyway. There is absolutely nothing in this new bylaw that identifies or discriminates by user type, by resident. Am I correct that?
Mr Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. If I might then just offer some comments, won't even use the whole rest of my time. I want to thank you and your colleagues for an extraordinary amount of work in a short period of time. You were given a task to deal with something that caught us, certainly caught me by surprise in my word. I think councillor Fleury, who we'll be speaking after, had been seeing more of this sort of, what we felt to be inappropriate conversions. And it was something that we brought to staff in an emergency situation. Used the interim control bylaw, I believe, as it is intended to, to get on top of, to stop something that was not what was ever really intended. And I saw extensive consultation and involvement, for the most part, of the players in conversion. And involved all of those players in this process. So I'm really pleased that in that about one-year timeline, we were able to do that. And I'm also very pleased that those people who were unintentionally caught up in the net, you know, those who were going about making conversions to their dwellings, as they always had, had, I know of at least a few cases where they had to put hold on their plans for a full year. So I guess I thank them for their patience. But I think it was necessary to do that and catch them up in that net in order to do something very important for the protection of the character of these particular streets and part of the city. So thank you once again, and I'll certainly be supporting this.
Thank you. Councillor Fleury. Consiglière Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Question relating to, to the study portion.
Alain, I can't see you, but one of the questions that were posed in the back is about planned developments. I know that you've included some clauses that are very targeted and were discussed over the last few weeks. I'd like to hear you about the PUDs and how we might avoid the risk of opening up loophole in terms of conversions. Through you, Mr Mayor. The planned unit developments, that is apartment buildings and large lots that include one, more than one building. So they were exempted for the simple reason that if you have more land on a property, you're in a position to use the square meters that are required for amenity space in many areas, and not just at the back. If you have a large lot, the backyards can face many cardinal points or... If you have a large lot, the backyards can face many cardinal points or geographical points. So we decided to withdraw these apartment buildings from the bylaw, and as, recently as yesterday, we saw that we could do something about future buildings, because generally there's a lot of area that can be covered, and they don't have to be submitted to the same clauses as to backyard space. So I think that the intent is maintained, and, Mr. Mayor, the intent is to ensure that in the denser areas of the city, that there be amenity space in order to not face buildings across the street necessarily.
So just to be clear, Alain, if someone has one building and wants to add another one in the back, that wouldn't be part of the description you just gave us? So, Mr. Mayor, for such an addition, a PUD would have to be allowed in the zoning, but since in several zones that already exist, this is already allowed, and since a property, the property needs to have the minimum area required, so if so, then we, it could, it could be done, but the approval would remain as such?
Thing that my, my council colleague was saying before, but obviously, you know that so many challenges, especially in Sandy Hill, but in other parts of the community as well, related to conversions, were that it became a loophole, right? The idea was that conversions were in place for the big families, the big structures that were to then be used by other, by multiple users, and in this case, most of the convertible dwellings were converted, the big ones. So it was used now in a different context to actually grow the surface and the amount of units. So quite happy that we're closing this loophole, and quite happy to see that it's in link with other studies that we've conducted, infill one, and now infill two that's underway, to really, to really maintain the character of neighborhoods and protect how the street functions, and also the look and feel of different streets in established neighborhoods, especially the ones that are adjacent to heritage districts.
So I'd like to thank the work done by staff.
Thank the community for raising and doing a lot of studies on these, the various properties that were problematic, to raise it to staff and then really work with staff to see what can be done. I know that the development industry, the small infill industry, has been in conversation with us, has been part of the conversation as well, and has recognized the challenges of the conversion. So wanted to thank staff on all the work, and hopefully the infill two can close that, the entire, the entire box of issues relating to character and look and feel of these types of properties. Thank you.
Merci, Consulier. Counsel Hubley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo my colleague's comments, and I think we need to voice appreciation for Chair Hume's leadership on this issue of planning, because what became apparent with the original proposal was that this was, we were trying to solve a local problem with a citywide solution. And there are examples in the suburbs and Counsel Harder's area, as well as mine and others, that conversions are a good thing, they're not a bad option. We were talking about in-law suites and people taking bigger homes and making an apartment out of it, that it's actually helpful in the suburbs. And so we appreciate that staff were able to make those changes and that Chair Hume helped us figure out the way to make what we see before us a solution that does work for everybody. So thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Any other questions or comments on this item? So it's Counsel Hume, seconded by Counsel Harder's motion, carried. Thank you. Next is disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Received. Motion to adopt reports, Counsel Moffett.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 17th of April 2014, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 40A, Community Protective Services Committee Report 30, Planning Committee Report 68, and Transit Commission Report 25 be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Motion requiring, excuse me, suspension of the rules of procedure. Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings, Counsel Deans and Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas Canadian demographics indicate that seniors are one of the fastest-growing population groups in our communities, with nationwide projections that by 2036, their numbers will represent 24 and a half percent, or 9.8 million citizens. And whereas according to the 2006 census from Stats Canada, over 100,000 seniors aged 65 and over reside in the city of Ottawa, and it is expected that by the year 2031, the number will go to approximately 250,000 seniors, making up 22% of the total Ottawa population. And whereas the city of Ottawa has benefited from the many tireless hours of volunteer work and leadership generously donated by local senior citizens, and where senior citizens have helped to build our communities through active living, shared knowledge, and diversity of experiences, and whereas the month of June is recognized by the province of Ontario as Seniors Month, therefore, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare 2014 to be Seniors Month in the city of Ottawa.
Okay, any other notices, a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings? Thank you, Counsel Deans. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion pour temps présentation de règlement, Counsel Moffett and Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, réglementation de ratification, Counselors Moffett and Thompson, please.
That the, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of 23rd of April 2014.
Carried. Any written inquiries from the clerk's office? Adjournment, Counsel Moffett and Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of 23rd of April be adjourned.
Carried, adopte. Merci, thank you, meeting adjourned.